Tonight as they have family commitments and we'll call this meeting to order at six oh four. If everyone can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are looking to make a few adjustments. We're going to move J to one and to two after F. If we can get a motion for that, please. And a second.
Should we take the vote?
Oh, yes, sorry. All in favor?
Thank you.
And approval of minutes. Monday, May fifteenth, 2023, workshop at four thirty. Monday, May fifteenth, regular meeting at six o'clock. Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, 2023 executive session at seven thirty a.m. And Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, 2023, executive session at nine thirty a.m. Recommendation to make a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded. All in, uh, all in favor? Thank you. And do we have any public comments tonight? Okay, moving on to F. No communications. And now we will... Who are we calling up?
Yep, this will be legacy naming rights. Kendra, if you want to come right on up, have Lindsay join you. You can actually sit, you can actually sit right there and, yep, and then just be sure to push the button to get your green light on with that. Kendra, are you prepared to introduce this? Is this what you'd like to do?
Uh, yeah, well, I'd just like to say a few words. I'm just here from the Legacy Foundation tonight and, as you know, you've approved naming rights several times before this and we're very fortunate to have individuals and businesses that sponsor things for the schools so that we can afford to provide our students with things that wouldn't normally be available through regular public funding. So I'm happy. We have two tonight. One I'm really happy about is the Koshen one, and you can say more about that, but Mr. Koshen was someone that was a teacher when I was in junior high and he had a wonderful career as a teacher, a coach, a columnist for sports in town. He's been on the Water District Trustee for years, so we're looking to have naming rights on the practice field for, at, on Alumni Boulevard and also for a chemistry lab. And also Eldridge Lumber, which is a new business that they've come to Sanford from York and Portland and other locations, so we're welcoming them and they've gotten really involved with the schools already. So I want to introduce Lindsay Eldridge.
Thank you all so much. So I won't take up too much of your time, but when Kendra found me, called me a couple months ago about this, I really jumped on the opportunity, especially for the landscaping and horticulture program. So I don't know if you guys have driven past our stores in York, Portland, or Sanford, but on the outside you will notice plants. But it is more than just a department for us. It's actually a really, really strong passion that we have. In 2015, my father-in-law was actually the first hardware store owner in the country to take synthetic herbicides and pesticides off of our shelves and we haven't looked back since. We are hugely passionate about organic farming and organic gardening. And then two years ago, I actually had the opportunity to visit SRTC and I found there that they share a very similar passion. First and foremost, we know the school is beautiful, but the children are extraordinary and the teachers are so passionate about what they teach. So thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of that and allowing Eldridge Lumber to be a part of that and to take part in this community that's been so welcoming to us.
Well, welcome and thank you. I couldn't say that much better. I know on behalf of the school department and as Kendra has mentioned, the Legacy Foundation, we've been able to get tremendous community support that comes back and is able to connect the business world and the community to our school with our students in ways that are relevant and ways that are healthy for us to be able to do that for our students. So I know as superintendent, I'm very proud. So the recommendation would be to accept a donation of $25,000 from Eldridge Lumber and Hardware through the Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation and grant ten years of naming rights to the Landscape and Horticulture Technical Center Lab at Sanford Regional Technical Center and Sanford High School.
I make that recommendation.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Well done. Thank you very much. Excellent. And you can head out. We won't be offended.
Yes.
Thank you.
And number two is, as Kendra mentioned, we also have another donation from the Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation tonight to approve their request to name the baseball practice field, the junior baseball, junior varsity baseball field on Alumni Drive to name that Koshen field. So that is the recommendation.
So I just want to amend that. Kendra, if I understood you correctly, it was the baseball practice field and chemistry lab? Okay. So I make a recommendation to accept a donation from the Legacy Foundation and approve, and approve the request to name the baseball practice field and chemistry lab co, after Mr. Koshen has presented.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, so we're moving on to our committee report, Special Education Advisory Committee.
Sure. So the Special Education Advisory Committee held their second meeting. The first meeting was on staffing and working on a staffing action plan. This second meeting recently held was, the subject matter for that was the referral process that we went over. And so the referral process either can be done from a parent. That's when a parent voices a concern for the child and that referral needs to be in writing. And then the IEP coordinator at that child's school will complete the referral paperwork portion with the parent concern. The IEP coordinator shares that parent referral with the teacher for input and then the referral paperwork will need to be completed by the teacher. If there are no concerns from the school staff, IEP coordinator will schedule a Part One referral with the parent, discuss the parent concerns. This may result in a processing referral or it may result in MTSS or a response to intervention plan. If it is a, if it is a referral, it's processed, the student is evaluated, and then if the RTI plan is needed, the MTSS team will develop an intervention plan. So that's the referral process from a parent's standpoint. From a teacher, the teacher shares a concern of a student at the MTSS meeting. The intervention plan is made to be implemented in the general education setting. The MTSS Multi-Systemic Team Support Service Team reviews student progress at the next MTSS meeting scheduled for that teacher. That's usually about a four to six-week time period. The MTSS team reviews the data periodically and then will make a determination to refer the student for special education. If that referral is made, the MTSS data is presented to the IEP coordinator and then the IEP coordinator gives that referral form to the teacher to complete. Completed referrals referred at a pre-referral meeting with the special education team and then the pre-referral team reviews that completed referral and either processes it for evaluation or sends it back to the MTSS with additional information needed. I think this is important to understand the timeline. Usually the, the school will have fifteen school days to process the referral, starting from the time the complete referral packet is received. And then there's forty-five school days from the time the signed consent is received to review evaluations and determine eligibility. And there's also referrals that will come in from Child Developmental Services, CDS. Those are for kids that are not in our school system yet with that as well. So it was a good meeting, very informative. Some of the things that came out of that is there is some professional development needed for our staff when it comes to collecting data, when it comes to interventions, and when it comes to progress morning, monitoring. And then one of the things we have to do a better job of is reinforcing that MTSS process. We need to do that at the beginning of the year as a starting point and then also throughout the school year as well. And we need to do more communication about the progress through the MTSS process. Those are some of the takeaways that we had from this meeting. Right now, next steps are, we don't have any other meetings scheduled through the summer. We are going to reconvene and have a meeting on Monday, August twenty-first at two to four p.m. Monday, August twenty-first is where we've tentatively set our meeting. We're trying to get that meeting scheduled prior to the school year beginning so that we can outline a meeting schedule as well as topics to be able to go forward. But so far, I think we've had two meetings on staffing and this one on the referral process that I think have been very productive. Any questions?
Thank you, Matt. We'll move on to the superintendent's report first of, oh, go ahead.
Sure. So the student, we'll start with our student representative report. Aiden's flying solo tonight is, John Paul is at the awards banquet for our seniors this evening and Emma has a driver's edu, driver's ed conflict as well for that. So that leaves Aiden flying solo with the student rep report and the Sanford Spotlight.
So, it's a pretty busy week for the seniors this week. Yesterday was the spring sport banquet to honor and kind of celebrate the, how well the spring sports season went and award all of those athletes. But for the seniors, today was the senior award and game night. Tomorrow is the senior banquet. And then on Wednesday, which is super exciting, is the senior graduation, which I'm excited to go to. But for the rest of us, next Tuesday is our last day of school. We'll have our final at the beginning of the day and then we'll be all done. I'm really excited. Not that I don't like school, but I have some money to recover from. And then fall sports and summer programs for sports start up pretty soon, which is exciting. I know I'll be going to the wrestling camp, but I think it'll go very well.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, this is a big week for our seniors. As Aiden mentioned tonight, they have the senior awards night. One of our traditions we have in Sanford is after that, the seniors have a game night at the high school, which always is a fun activity. Tomorrow night is the senior banquet and then also tomorrow is, our seniors will don their caps and gowns and they are going to be going through our elementary schools and our middle school. We also will make stops at St. Thomas School as well as those acting students will also have an opportunity to go to their school to do a walkthrough to be able to see staff and teachers and current students, be able to celebrate and congratulate them and wish them well. And as Aiden mentioned, graduation is Wednesday, this Wednesday, six p.m., Alumni Stadium. Aiden, you want to head with the latest edition of the spotlight?
Yes. So to start off, voting for the Sanford School Budget Validation Referendum is going to be Tuesday, June thirteenth. For those that need absentee ballots, they are available until June eighth. There's a link to find out more information there. At Sanford Middle School, they had their Pay It Forward Assembly where they held a penny drive assembly on Tuesday, May thirtieth, where the students and faculty members gathered to contribute to a worthy cause. They were able to raise $3,500 for the annual fundraiser and they had Katie Osmer from Sanford who spoke about the power of kindness and how small acts can profoundly impact someone's life. At SRTC, they had their recognition night last Thursday where Director Kathy Sargent was able to start the night with some welcoming remarks and then Mr. Nelson was able to come over and finish that off. They were able to give scholarships and things to the students to, so yeah, that's exciting. And then at the high school, the AP students had their AP Research Symposium where I think it was, I want to say nine, maybe eight students, shared their presentations or their posters for the projects that they had been working on all year, which is very exciting. At Sanford Middle School, eighth grader Bella Garno successfully completed a year-long project for Pure Water for the World, which is a nonprofit focused on providing clean drinking water to underprivileged communities. And there is a link to find out more about that. At MCS, the kindergarteners took a field trip to SRTC Thursday morning where they got to explore some of the programs that SRTC offers. They were split into different groups and each group had the opportunity to visit different programs, or three different programs. At Pride Elementary, first graders planted tomato plants that aligned with our district's plant unit in science. They learned the basics of how to properly care for a plant in order for it to survive. And with patience and care, the students' excitement to see the green stalks arrive was priceless. There is a link to find out more there. And then at Carl J. Lamb, the City of Sanford's Department of Public Works came by for a Tetra Truck event last week and they want to give a huge thank, thank you to Kendra Sherman and Rachel Dorr for organizing the events. And then at Sanford Community Adult Education, they congratulate Lisa Merlin, who was recently appointed the new operations manager, and they're very fortunate to have her as a new lead. For the Spartan Times, this article is about the Sanford Elks held its annual youth banquet that celebrates the academic success of students in the Sanford School District. The event hosted and recognized Sanford High School's top fifty academic performers in the class of twenty-three and the top ten graduates for the class were announced. And to read the rest of the article, there's a link there. For the employee spotlight, it was Lauren Brown at MCS and they talk about how these, she gets to see the students grow over the course of the year, both physically and also academically. And there's more about that there. And then that final section is just about the Red and White Foundation, which is a nonprofit group, and how they've been an integral part of SHS for the past twenty years, or twenty-five years, or for over twenty-five years, sorry. And then for more announcements, the kindergarten registration is now open for the 2023-2024 school year and there's a link to do that there. And then some additional links to stay up to date with the Sanford community, City of Sanford, WSSR-TV, Sanford Athletics Instagram, Spartan Times Online Newspaper, Sanford Springville News, and community announcements.
Well done. Thank you, Aiden. I think Aiden's also forgot to mention for the AP Symposium at Sanford High School, one of the people presenting was Aiden with that. What is, what was, do you, what was, what was your topic?
Mine was about the reproductive frequency of morning echoes in varying physical environments, physical surroundings.
Which, one of the things as part of this is you have to do some research on something that hasn't been researched yet, really.
Yes. Yeah. So at the beginning of the class, we had to do like a fifty source assignment where we went through and analyzed fifty sources to figure out what the gap in knowledge was.
Yeah. And so Aiden was also joined by Emma. Emma was also there. So I know I, I really enjoy that program. I get a chance to talk to our students, to see what they're coming up from for some of the topics they choose and why and doing that. So kudos. Well done, Aiden, as well as your classmates for doing that. Also, kudos to Sanford Middle School for their Pay It Forward Assembly. Josh from Maine graduates has a lot to do with that. That penny drive raising over $3,500 is amazing. And kudos to Katie Osmer for her powerful kindness message that really resonated. SRTC Recognition Night is also one of my favorite nights. Didn't disappoint this year. It's great to see SRTC that has such a sense of community amongst all of its attendees and students and all the various programs with that. So kudos there. And I will be talking more about the school budget in a couple of minutes. But next up is field trips and our Skills USA, speaking of SRTC, our Skills USA Leadership National Conference is taking place in Atlanta, Georgia later this month. Five of our students will be going down with two chaperones to participate in the Skills USA National Nationals with that. So kudos to them and going down for that. Also, want to talk about our new community member update. Since our last meeting on May fifteenth, we've had a lot going on. We have thirty-seven new students have joined us. The second group of students, remember at the time on the fifteenth, we'd had the first wave start, we were getting ready for the second wave. They have successfully started in our schools. You'll notice that all of our students are eager to learn. Right now, it's probably, we, I really want to sing the kudos to all of our schools and our staff and our students for being so welcoming to the asylum seekers and these students who are joining our various school communities. It's not an easy time to join our schools at this time of the year because the month of May is a big testing month with that. So there's a lot of testing that's taking place. There's also field trips and as the weather gets warmer, we also have safety drills that we are required to get done. So those have been, you know, a little bit challenging for our new students. But overall, things are going well. We're working on teaching the basic routines and expectations of school, the cultural differences. Through that, we have provided opportunities for the students to get together as a group. One thing we've learned is we don't want to make any assumptions that students know how to use the equipment. That's something that we need to be, pay attention to. We're teaching basic skills and we started some of the pull-out language classes at Sanford Middle School and Sanford High School. One of the things that came up was concerns about the grade level placements because the system that we use here in the United States in Sanford is different a little bit from when, what is used back in their home countries. One thing that we did that I thought was pretty neat is we brought the families in of our new students to the schools that their children are attending for a tour and to meet the staff. We kind of put like a quasi-open house together for those. That was very successful. Sanford Community Adult Education and Jane Perkins has set up adult courses that are going on and that's in coordination with Curtis Lake Church. One of the things that is coming up is questions about summer and as we're, we're trying to do our best to balance that by starting to look at putting into place some tentative plans. Obviously, those tentative plans are going to be necessary if people can secure housing on the long-term piece of that as well as what we've got for resources in order to be able to try to set that up. So we've been, as a district, we've been meeting weekly as a school department. There's also the community coordination meetings that are also happening weekly as well. And we've started to explore additional curriculum materials and professional development needs for our staff so that we can be looking for that, to have that in place and ready next fall. So that's our new community member update. And then I do want to talk about the 2023-2024 budget referendum. Aiden mentioned that is leading the lead story in the latest edition of the Sanford Spotlight. We have pushed out information to all of our stakeholders. Aiden mentioned that the last day of school is Tuesday, June thirteenth. Well, that's also voting day. And so the only item that is on the budget is the school budget that has to be approved by articles. So I've had an opportunity to get out to the various groups. I've spoken to our PTAs. I'll be hitting another one tomorrow evening. I have spoken to some of our service organizations throughout the city and we did push out information on the school budget. I do think the budget that we have put forward, when you combine the budget with the city's budget, it's a very modest increase, especially in these very challenging times. And I think with the information that we've pushed out, we're also doing our best to kind of show people how we arrived at that budget with that. So I'm encouraging everyone to get out to vote, all our Sanford Springville residents that are registered to vote, get out June thirteenth. There is absentee voting available right here at City Hall and that is available right up through June eighth of this week. And that's the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Matt. We'll move on to the director's report. Looks like Steve has several things to chat with us about tonight.
Okay. So tonight I have Ms. Lambert with me to talk about the first part of my report. And the first item on my report is our ESEA planning team. This is the team that reviews how we spend our federal funds. On the team, we have a variety of stakeholders. We have myself, Curriculum Director Beth, Aaron Berry, who's a teacher over at the middle school, Trish Bolvin, who's a teacher at Sanford Pride, Anne Laura, who's our data specialist, Angie Taylor, who's a Title I math teacher, Sarah DeShamba, who's a teacher, Kathy Hallie, which is a Title I teacher, Rachel White, who's a teacher, parent, and a community member, same thing for Beth Letourneau, Amanda Doyle, high school admin, Mike Bailey, middle school admin, Kristen Daly, Sanford Pride admin, and then Marie Scalfani, who's our literacy coach. This is a committee that has been together now for a couple of years. The purpose of the committee is to review our district needs and to determine how to allocate our use of our federal grants that we have, our federal funds. As we look at our federal funds, for us, in Sanford, we receive funds in three buckets. The first bucket is Title I. That is for students that are in need of intervention. And for us, that is math and literacy intervention. And for us, our Title I funding, we spend primarily at our elementary level, but we do bleed or trickle into the middle school and serve students up to grade six. Title II is about professional development for staff, ed techs, teachers, administrators. And Title IV is student support and academic enrichment programs. And we'll talk a little bit more about what we do with our Title IV funds as we get moving along here. I think we're going to move along.
Maybe. There we go.
The next one. So if we look at our Title I funds for this previous school year, it's similar to what we've done in the past. We pay for our Title I staff salaries and benefits, the family engagement activities that are done with those Title I students, Title I professional development for teachers, summer school program for Title I kiddos. We pay for three-fifths of an administrative assistant up here at central office. It pays for some of our Title I coaches, all the materials that Title I needs, and also homeless transportation supplies. Homeless transportation is an expense that is not funded anywhere else in the funding formula. And so this is where we capitalize on Title I funds and we put some money in there to fund homeless transportation. That does not cover all of it and that's why we seek out grants when they're available with that. You want to talk about Title II funds?
Sure. So professional development for this school year, we focused on social emotional learning. We heard from staff and administrators last year that that was definitely an area of focus for this year. We also use some of the Title II funds for one of our literacy coaches' salaries and benefits. We've continued to implement restorative practices across the district, K to twelve. We spent a lot of time this year working on school safety around the Alice training. We've also implemented several professional development opportunities for our new reveal math program, K to twelve in the district. We also supported the new teachers in the ELA Um, we also supported the, um, new teachers in the ELA department at the middle school with, um, a company by the name of Logos. They, they, um, come in once a month and they work with staff. They, um, mentor, co-teach, give them, um, areas of improvement. And, um, then we also have other ongoing professional development stipends workshop. We've, um, been able to send, um, different members of our staff to, um, national conferences with that as well.
When we look at Title IV funds, our Title I funds over the past several years have decreased and so, we have needed additional funds. And so, we have transferred our Title IV funds over to spend to support student intervention in literacy and math, which is allowable under the grant regulations. So, if we look at our two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four allocations for next year, and these are preliminary, they will be finalized in June, but they will not change a whole heck of a lot. Uh, for Title I, we saw a slight increase of two thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars. Title II, we saw a slight increase of eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-three cents. And Title IV, we saw a decrease of one thousand nine hundred fifteen forty-one. You may say, well, we did receive a little bit of additional money in Title I there, but when you look at the salaries and benefit increases for our staff, we, we are falling behind in our Title I funding. Um, so I just point that out there. So, one of the things the committee looks at is what are the needs? And it's been really difficult over the past several years in really getting data that tracks our progress from fall to spring. Ms. Lambert has talked about the change in the state assessment. So, when we look holistically at our data, we see our reading scores are stronger than our math scores. We see that our math scores, um, we've done some things to, um, address those. We brought in a new math program, but in general, reading is stronger than math. And then, we look at, students are not where we would expect them to be in terms of academic performance and so, there is that need for intervention still exists. As we move on, in general conversation, we also have a conversation with, what are the areas of, that you're seeing with students? Not every student, but in general, your colleagues, what are you seeing? And these are the areas that the group sort of came up with. Um, first of all, we talked about lagging academic skills, lagging social and emotional skills, the ability to self-regulate, coping skills, problem solving, having that grit and determination, that motivation to keep moving when things get difficult. Talked about executive functioning, student engagement, and then, lack of consistent attendance amongst some students. So, we had those areas of student concern that we sort of had, and then Beth, you want to talk about?
I sent out a survey, um, in the late winter to kind of gain from staff what they think or what they felt their needs were around, um, professional development in order to continue to support our students as we move forward. So, there were, um, five topics that kind of stood out above all the rest of the other options. The first was social-emotional learning for students, trauma-informed teaching, um, continuing our PD with mathematics, multi-tiered system of support intervention strategies, and multilingual learners or how to support our ESOL population. And then, always there's a continuation of very specific content area PD, um, including leadership development. So, this is something that we're focusing on, um, with our regionalization professional development that we're starting this summer and we're going to continue through next year, um, as well.
So, as we look at our funding recommendations that we have, um, put forward, Title I funding, staff, the majority of that funding is staff, paying for our literacy interventionist, our math interventionist, professional development for those folks, leaving three-quarters, or three-fifths, three-quarter, three-fifths of our administrative support there, um, putting money in there for homeless transportation, continuing with family engagement funds, and then, the money to fund summer school next year. So, really, those funds, as you look at those Title I, we have had some staffing changes in the Title I positions, which worked in our favor when it comes to, um, funding, but that's pretty consistent with what we've been able to fund in years past. If you look at Title II?
Um, so you can see the breakdown of where we're, um, supporting our trauma and social-emotional learning and we're also including substance abuse education because that all comes into the social-emotional portion of students. Multi-tiered system of support, um, our multilingual learner professional development, um, some ten thousand dollars for our reveal math to continue. And we have had some desire from staff to have some leadership development across the district, so we're going to put some funds towards that. Other content area PD, and then, the last portion is for our math coach, K to four.
And so, with this funding, we have taken into account what we believe is our student needs for intervention to continue that model. And we've also believed that this captures what our staff, uh, past month or so have expressed to us they need for PD. These amounts in here are just a rough amount. As we get working into finalize the application into specifically, we're going to purchase this text or we're going to have this speaker, those amounts will change. This is just a rough estimate about what that will look like. Um, the next step from here is we will put this on our website to give the public an opportunity to comment on how we are using our federal funds. And then, we will write the formal application in July, um, to submit to the Department of Ed for approval. So, that's basically the process. And if you have any questions, we'll try to answer them now the best we can.
Did you mention carryover funds and where that is?
I did not mention carryover funds.
I, I think what you, I, I mentioned that because of the rising costs of where we are for, um, salary and benefits in terms of the allocation.
We do have, um, with our title funds, we have, in a year, we have to spend our funds, the majority of our funds, by the end of that fiscal year. We do have some carryover funds that, once we close the books, we'll know what those exact amounts are. And that's how we can fund or have been funding any changes in personnel. So, if we have a, um, a staff member that leaves Title I, that comes in and we have somebody that comes in at a higher cost, we have been able to use our carryover funds to offset some of those costs. So, um, there is a buffer in there that we have that's built in so that way, we don't run as a deficit for those programmings, um, with that. And the same thing for professional development, we're allowed to carry some money over and that gives us a buffer there, um, with that, so. Good. Um, second item on the agenda was just giving an update tonight on our tobacco vape prevention work group. Um, since our last meeting, we did hold our second meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-third. Um, that was our second meeting. During that meeting, we reviewed, reviewed our brainstorm from the first session that we held and we identified, um, some next steps. Um, when we look at next steps, there's a couple of big areas. The first one is really about messaging. Um, when we look at this issue, this is really a community issue that schools cannot solve along. We're very fortunate to have Southern Maine Healthcare alongside with us. Um, when we think about messaging, it begins with messaging in our schools, involving our students, messaging to our families and our communities, and providing education to our parents. We talked a lot about access. You know, access is something that everybody in our community has a responsibility, from our business owners to our parents, to, um, community in general. Um, but really messaging, continuing some work on that. We talked about curriculum. Beth Lambert has already reviewed what is being done in terms of education. This committee, we want to do a deeper dive into what is the appropriate age to begin education? And then, really, what are we using to teach, um, tobacco and vape prevention? Are we using the best resources that are out there, the most engaging resources for, um, our students? When we look at our response to offenders, that's another area where we feel we need to do some work. Um, counseling, right now, we put counseling pieces in place for first-time and second-time offenders. Um, we feel like we do a great job of addressing those mental health supports that students need, but we really don't feel like we're doing a great job. Is, what about those students that are addicted? They're addicted, they need substance use counseling. And so, hopefully, with the, the hire of a new person, we can start to really address that. Looked at education, what are we doing for resources, um, for students that, uh, are offending our policy? We've been using the SERP class in the past. That really, for us, um, fits a need, but there are students that are, um, well down their road in terms of use that need some more in-depth education. And so, looking at what resources are available there. Looking at our suspension and the use of support and transition rooms. Um, the number of days that we're currently using, is it appropriate? Is it not appropriate? Are we getting our students learning from this? Reevaluating that and looking at our restorative component. So, over the summer, we plan on looking at curriculum to begin that work and over the summer, the administrative team looks at really, um, is looking to really look at that response piece. What are we doing to make sure we're also coordinated between what are we doing at the elementary, middle school, and high school? And there's some cohesiveness to that, um, with our approach. We also talked about, um, real briefly, um, the physical environment. You know, are there things we need to do with our physical environment? Do we need to install vape sensors in the bath, restrooms? Um, the doors on some of our facilities, um, supervision. So, that is also came up as an area to explore. So, messaging, curriculum, response to offenders, the physical environment, those are the four big areas that we are going to tackle, um, as we move forward with our work in terms of tobacco and vape. I think I covered it all. Any questions for the group? Good?
Yep, we're good. Thank you for your work on the, on both of those items. All right, we're moving on to J1 summer nominations with Mr. Nelson. Uh, recommendation to allow the superintendent to offer teaching contracts during June, July, and August twenty-twenty-three for unfilled positions for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Do I have a recommendation?
I'll make that recommendation.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Thank you. That's very helpful for us as we get out there to try to make sure for any openings we have that we can, um, hire and be competitive with other groups so it doesn't hold us back in doing that. So, I appreciate the school committee offering that opportunity.
All right, we don't have any old business, so we're going to move on to resignations and retirements.
Sure. One retirement to announce, Nancy Jones, a longtime ed tech one, Sanford Pride Elementary. Uh, for many years, Nancy, uh, worked in, uh, elementary library as well. So, want to thank her for her many, many years of service and wish Nancy absolutely nothing but the best in retirement. Uh, a number of resignations, uh, Nyla Labear, second shift custodian, Lauren Williams, kitchen personnel at MCS. Uh, Jake Mills is resigning his sixth grade social studies ESER position because he's taking a local social studies position in the local budget at Sanford High School. A couple athletic, uh, resignations to announce, Becky McCann, middle school cheer coach, Nate Mann, middle school athletic liaison, and Colleen Cottoraro, JV field hockey coach. Um, couple ed techs are resigning, Melissa Gould, uh, Sanford Pride, and Michaela Webster at Carl J. Lamb. Uh, got some teaching resignations to announce sadly. Uh, Kelly Tibbetts is moving on, uh, as an English teacher at Sanford High School, moving on to be the librarian media specialist, uh, for the Gorham School Department. So, we wish Kelly the best of luck in her endeavors. Couple of our high school social studies teachers are, have taken, uh, jobs, uh, closer to where they live, um, in, um, in that area. So, want to wish the best to Lauren Swift and Darcy Drew. Uh, Elizabeth Daly, Elizabeth Daly has resigned her, uh, part-time college and career advisor position at Sanford Community Adult Education. And also Kathy Sargent, SRTC director, resigning her position. Kathy will be returning back to the counseling ranks to be a school counselor back, um, at Trape Academy in the Kidery School Department. Uh, and want to thank, uh, Kathy for all of her contributions, uh, to the Sanford School Department over the last ten years. Kathy started out as the assistant SRTC director before moving into the SRTC director role, uh, as helping everything from the move to the new school, to navigating the pandemic, to the expansion of programs. Um, very, um, uh, thankful for Kathy and all of her contributions to both SRTC and the Sanford, uh, greater Sanford community and wish her absolutely nothing but the best of luck. Couple staff, uh, some staff appointments. Uh, we have, um, some athletic ones. Uh, Tim Cole, JV boy soccer coach, Ruby LaChance, middle school field hockey coach. Um, appointing Ryan Goad as a second shift custodian at MCS. We do have, um, a literacy ed tech at Margaret Chase Smith School, Pam Legere. And we are, uh, bringing forward this evening, um, filling the library ed tech three positions at our elementary schools. We have Gretchen Grinnell Martin at MCS and Jennifer Lynn Caswell at Sanford Pride. And later in the agenda, we have a transfer, uh, filling the one at Carl J. Lamb. A lot of stipends to announce. Uh, we're filling a, our summer, uh, food, uh, program, summer kitchen personnel. Those are all temporary, uh, announcements there. We also have Title I summer school teachers, uh, to announce. And then, we also have a number of our extended school year teachers. Uh, everything, uh, from people filling those positions to our part-timers sharing those positions. And then, we also have the support ed techs as well. If it's okay with the school committee, I will not name all of those because there are quite a few to announce there. Uh, I mentioned the transfers. We have Ashley Walker moving from an ed tech one at Sanford Middle School to an ed tech two at Sanford Middle School. Uh, Sebastiana Lucero from a special ed ESER position at Sanford High School moving to a special education position at the high school in the local budget. And, uh, Nicole Setrano, a kitchen personnel at Carl J. Lamb, she'll be moving over to Sanford Middle School. And as I mentioned earlier, uh, for the library ed tech three position at Carl J. Lamb, Tiffany Bork is going to be moving from her support and transition ed tech position to that library ed tech position. Uh, we are in the process of hiring and so, I do have, uh, a number of people to bring before the school committee tonight to nominate, um, for that. And the people I'll be nominating this evening are Wendy Ross, a resource room teacher at Sanford Pride, Sarah DiStefano, grade six resource room teacher at the middle school, Samantha Creach, a fourth grade teacher in an ESER position at Margaret Chase Smith School, Carrie Nyland, a grade four classroom teacher at Carl J. Lamb, Sarah Janizik, science teacher at Sanford High School, Adrian Wonograd, a life skills special ed teacher at the middle school, and Keith Gendron moving from a ESER math position at the middle school to a middle school math teacher in the local budget. So, looking to, um, accept those nominations.
Yep. Recommendation to accept the nominated professional staff as presented with a one-year probationary contract?
I'll make that recommendation.
Seconded. Thank you. All in favor? All right. Moving on to policies and procedures, we have a second reading with Steve of Policy AD, Educational Philosophy and Mission.
I only have one policy this evening for a second read, Policy AD, Educational Philosophy and Mission. Um, the updated policy outlines the overarching philosophy and the mission of the Sanford School Department and I recommend to accept the second reading of this policy. Just on a side note, this will finish up the Section A policy manual. So, those policies will now be, all be up to date and current as of today.
All right. Uh, recommendation to accept the updated AD policy?
I'll make that recommendation.
Seconded. All in favor? Thank you. And it does not look like we have any items for future agendas. We will move on to calendar announcements.
Sure, as I, excuse me, already mentioned, high school graduation is going to take place this Wednesday, six PM, uh, at Alumni Stadium. Uh, we're going to be right back here next Monday for a, uh, our second school committee meeting in June. That'll take place at six PM. Uh, also, as Aiden mentioned, the last day of school is June thirteenth. Our school budget referendum is also on Tuesday, June thirteenth. Sanford Community Adult Education graduation is, um, a week from this Wednesday, June fourteenth. That'll start at seven PM at Sanford Community Adult Education. Also, um, we're looking to have a, uh, executive session that we had to, um, reschedule from this evening. We're, um, we're looking to have that tomorrow, June sixth, at four fifteen. We do have three school committee members who are available for that. Um, so, uh, thank you for your work. do have three school committee members who are available for that. So thank you for that. Also, looking ahead to next Monday, June 12th, I expect to also have to have an executive session to be able to bring people up to speed on negotiations, a new contract for our administrators. Our next negotiation session is scheduled for a week from today, June 12th. It's a busy time of year, and with that, there is the possibility that we might be able to have a new agreement to bring forward, to be able to discuss in that executive session, and then possibly approve later that evening the school committee. If not, we'll at least be able to provide an update on where those negotiations are. Optimistic and positive that we can be able to reach an agreement soon. And so those are your calendar announcements.
Thank you. Recommendation to adjourn the meeting at 6:55.
I'll make that recommendation.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you, everyone.